All right, Richard, um, well, I'll let Councilor Holloway, um, he's the liaison to this meeting. It's just us, it's just these two members. This is it. Richard, it's you and Kelly making a decision.
Oh, we don't have, uh.
So Lori, Lori is unable to join us, she is ill, and Alan, um, was not reappointed this year. Uh, we're waiting to see what happens with the Salish, um, so he wasn't reappointed, so we weren't able to ask him to join us.
Well, that's too bad. I think he has a lot to offer.
I agree with you. Um, I mean, who knows, we'll see what happens with the Salish. You know, my hope is that maybe we can work it all out and he can continue to be a member of LTAC. So really, we won't meet again until later on in the year, so, um. Yeah, this was an unusual circumstance that we're meeting again. All right. So, um, so Richard, actually, let me just, excuse my documents. Um, let me just get you both a little bit up to speed. Um, back in December, literally on the day when we would be going to city council to approve the allocations that you guys determined. Uh, we were contacted by Meadowbrook Farm saying they had turned in an application. They forwarded us the application and it's clear that they turned it in before the deadline, but it was nowhere to be found in my deleted scent anything. So it must have gotten stuck in a spam filter. So, uh, we went to council that night and we did try to see if on the floor, we could make this, this report. We did, we made an honest attempt to recommend that we, we had, um, because for our hallway and I, you know, we, we had a plan, which was, um, well, to take it from my funding. Being that I was reachable and could have a conversation and city, but council did not want to vote on that. They wanted us to honor the process and so here we are.
Well, there's actually, uh, some some legal in place that says a council cannot alter what an LTAC committee presents forward. They can accept or deny.
As, as in?
As the whole thing. That's to keep us politicians out of playing games with LTAC.
So it was a one and done, like, yeah.
All or nothing. So we tabled.
So we're back to committee. So here we are.
Okay, so, um. So. Doing this and it's not, so, so I have some, some reservations on some of this and some of it is because um, I don't know. You guys own Meadowbrook fifty fifty, right?
Fifty fifty, okay.
Okay, okay. So, um. There's no, they did not go to North Bend for any funds. That I'm aware of. Okay. That is just my problem, just because I have some major issues with some of this, because North Bend has not been, um. They put all their money into the downtown foundation instead of giving money to some of this other stuff, and I have a problem with that, so, um. This to me should be fifty fifty.
That's part of the same discussion that you guys had when we were talking about.
I agree with you, Kelly. I just think that it's a real shame that other people like us who are trying to better the community would be forced to suffer because of, uh.
I agree.
Because of decisions that, that none of us have any control over.
I agree.
Uh, I would like to think that there's going to be a lot of change, uh, in the very near future and what you're talking about. Uh, but I, uh, I can't predict the future any better than you can. Um, and so if we deny this application, we're, uh, we're really leaving them once again with no resources to uh, to, to better what is an awesome community resource.
Well, and you're making the applicants suffer for behavior of North Bend.
Right.
Yeah. And, and not really just North Bend, it's really just a couple of individuals that controlled everything. The prevailing view is that, that it's a community resource in North Bend as well, too. So. But I do understand what Kelly's saying, and I don't know, that, that would be for people above our pay grade, I guess, to send that message, uh, up to North Bend. Um, uh, but I don't, I don't think you and I can send it, Kelly.
No.
Uh, I do know that.
You spoke to Lori, what was Lori's opinion on this? Okay.
Lori does not feel well, whatever you want.
She was in the air, she's like, yeah, whatever you decide.
Yeah, that's what hurt.
So what do you, Richard, what are your thoughts?
Well, it's, uh, it's roughly three hundred dollars per applicant to, to fund this. Right?
Well, can't we, uh. So we, well, let's back up though. We did have twelve hundred dollars that we shoehorned in here.
Yes.
Uh, two hundred to you and a thousand to lights. Uh, do we want to, uh, at least in part, unshoe-horn that and put that on this? And then discuss from there, what more?
Nicole, how do you feel about?
I don't, I don't have a vote. I.
But what are your?
Yeah, but you were the city lights and this was the thousand dollars to cover those trees.
I think, I, I think that if we had had this application that day, there wouldn't have been twelve hundred dollars left over. So I think that's a good starting point. Fund that, and then that's basically another two thousand. Where does that? You know, where does that come from? Yeah.
And, and there's a, do we do the other two hundred, two, two thousand or not do the two thousand? If we do the two thousand, where's it come from?
Well, that's a good point. You could say, let's go back in time. If we'd had this application, we would have funded everything and then had twelve hundred dollars and then you would have, uh, funded that. I just did a quick glance, Richard, you would have perspective because you've had tenure on this commission, but um, I think Meadowbrook, there have been times they have been funded, there have been times there have, they haven't been funded.
Right, they haven't been funded for many years for um, um, maybe for somewhat political reasons, uh, that I don't, I don't really know what they were, uh. But, um, I don't, I don't really profess to have a lot of knowledge about it. We, we funded them whenever they had an application that, uh, that had, um, that met the requirements of the, of the program.
So I would request to, I feel like they will use the elk in this as well. And I just don't want, I want a disclaimer on the elk, that they are wild animals, and that's what we did on all of our stuff. Is these are wild animals and you cannot, um, approach them, do not approach. Because the flyer that, I don't know who paid for it, but I thought it was Meadowbrook that paid for it to go on all the fairies. Am I wrong?
I, we haven't funded them as far as I know. Does the application say that they're funding, that they're communicating about the elk or about rental thing for the, for the building?
Says rental, but they have to, I mean, elk is part of it.
Well, I mean, the elk are a draw. I mean, they are a draw.
They are a draw.
But we just need, when the people are here to be safe with the elk, but the elk are a draw.
They are in formative work especially, and so I just want, we're having some major issues. I've had, uh, probably twenty-two phone calls on elk, and so I just, I don't.
Oh, she does speak of the elk here.
Yeah, so this is my, my, I do not want to see this money spent going to the fairies, um, to you should, did you see the backlash, Richard, on, um, the fairies with the elk? Uh, online, on Facebook and everything?
No, I, I missed that, I'm sorry.
Okay, did you see it all?
The, the backlash that happened with the, the, on the fairies, the, the elk, um, things that were on that ferry.
No, I think one time I saw the elk thing on the ferry.
A huge backlash.
From the elk preservation.
No, from both cities, from North Bend and Snoqualmie, and so I just don't want anything coming back at us, just so you know. I, I look at things in the future and I don't want, I don't want somebody going, well, you funded it. You know what I mean?
I just want to make sure. One thing there that because they know that the elk is a draw, the elk is on the flyer because people will pick up the flyer and then they, I mean, they're using the resources that they have and get it.
Um, but it has to state, and I, and I mean, I, I, I feel very strongly on this. Um, it has to have a disclaimer on it, and it has to, if we're funding this, it has to have a disclaimer on the, on the elk.
Richard, do you, how do you feel that?
Uh, I'm, I understand where you're coming from, I just wonder what are the limits of our, uh, authority and responsibilities are as a committee. We can share that information with the, with the city, but it isn't really, isn't it really the city itself, either through the council or the administration that should be sending that message? I just don't, uh, I didn't want to set it, uh, we, we've been pretty careful about, about putting uh, our own restrictions on the funding, other than what is consistent with, uh, sometimes people have proposed to do things that appear to be outside of what we've been told we're allowed to fund, and we've usually, uh, uh, said something uh, so that, so that none of us get into trouble later because the funding was used for, for an area that, that isn't intended by the state. Uh, but, uh, I, I think what you're saying is really valid, I just don't know whether that's for you and me to say that. What do you think, Kelly?
Well, I, I can, you know, I can, in essence, make a motion as part of this, that the, kind of, that the council take a vote and says, you know, uh. Any, any mention of the elk included in, in these things is, is to include that these are wild animals and should be, you know, you should give them distance.
Yes.
I can, I, no, they're not, and, um.
We're not point defiance where we have systems in place.
No, we don't. And this last person that I saw probably a week ago, that literally got out of her car and stopped her car on two oh two and ran to the elk. And I was just blown away. I went, this is a highway first and foremost. She stopped in the middle and ran to the elk, and I'm like, this is not okay. So, and it's starting to be a bigger thing, so I don't know if you've been watching the stuff in, uh, um, Yosemite and also, um, uh, Yellowstone and the different things, they're having major issues with it as well, and so, um. Why we have to tell people is beyond me. But I feel like it is a.
You can't legislate stupid.
No, you can't. But I want people.
My husband wanted me to get back in the car with the bikes who were coming out of Snoqualmie. Then he Googled things and was like, someone was killed. I wasn't running towards it, but I was like taking a picture.
No, they're very fast.
Sorry, Richard.
No, no, it's, it's, it's fine. I, I like, we, you know, that's, I think one of the neat things about our, our communities is that they're small and we can, uh, uh, we, we can be informal about a lot of these things for the benefit of our community. It really seems like that disclaimer belongs on the sign at the Elk viewing parking lot along two oh two. Be a disclaimer, because, uh, because a lot of people, if, if it's just going to be put in a brochure, even if that is the right thing to request, it really, um, is only going to be seen by somebody who actually read the brochure, and the people who need to have that information probably didn't read the brochure. Anyhow.
Well, I just, there's, um, and I'm also, I understand, um. We are trying really hard to be considerate about the lands, and so we've been calling it responsible tourism. Is what we're calling things, and so, um, we're just bringing it to a people's attention about, um, taking care of, um, what, uh, the land, like the land.
Yeah. Well, City of Snoqualmie has a sign making shop now, are they capable of making that type of sign, or is it only, uh, traffic control signs?
I mean, we can make a such sign, but I don't know, because that stretches is a wash dot. So.
Well, inside, though, if you can do it inside the.
Oh, inside the park.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah? So how much did they, they said they had in kind, somebody was designing it for them for free, and then what was the other charge?
Printing.
Printing, was it seventeen hundred for printing?
Oh, let's see what we got. Uh, Meadowbrook Farm Preservation Association, in kind was two thousand two hundred and sixty. Meadowbrook Farm Preservation, uh, also committed a thousand dollars cash. All personal side benefits, nothing, administration was nothing. Uh, website flyer, no, flyers was two thousand two hundred and sixty, print flyers. Construction tests, map drafts, photos, draft layout, two thousand two hundred and sixty, print the flyers was two thousand. Uh, professional graphics design, layout, assembly and print, uh, it's two thousand two hundred and thirty-two. All sum was six hundred, six thousand four hundred and ninety-five, with half of it, uh, being questioned here for three thousand two hundred and two.
So what was the two thousand? That doesn't make sense.
Graphics design, layout and assembly for printing, twenty-two hundred and thirty-two dollars. Well, we spent, the, the railway museum spent fifteen thousand dollars on graphic design for the new website that we launched last year. So graphic design is definitely not cheap.
Right, I agree.
No, I know, but I don't understand what the flyers, so that doesn't, it doesn't make, it doesn't match. So the two thousand two hundred and sixty for consultation is not that.
That's probably the concepting with the designer.
That's not two thousand two hundred.
No, but that's all of this consultation, text, map, grass, photos, I mean, that's, um, that's, my designer would do it for less, but.
I know, so would mine.
Yeah, it was professional graphics design, layout and assembly, two thousand two hundred and thirty-two dollars, print the flyers, ten thousand copies, a thousand dollars.
Let's see, why is there two, there, there's two charges on here, so that's why I'm just not understanding that.
Well, she clarified it with her email what the amount was, so.
Just two thousand two hundred and thirty-two for generate the flyer, thousand dollars for printing.
So, but the thousand dollars cash is from, so it should, so potentially it is not that full price. Because you see what I'm saying, they, that thousand dollars not, it, they're not asking us for a thousand dollars, because they said the thousand dollars came from the, um, from Meadowbrook. Did that make sense?
But, I mean, that's, that's only half the total price. They're only asking us for half the total price. They're funding the other half, and that's where you're seeing that thousand dollars in cash that is coming from Meadowbrook.
Okay, it just is weird, I didn't, I wouldn't have done it that way.
Richard, six thousand dollars for um, ten thousand flyers, design and print?
It's a lot. It's a lot.
What's that, sixty cents each?
I mean, I, I did a, the trail map brochure, uh, I think I, yeah. I did that with the port grant, and I got like thirty thousand folded flyers for not, yeah, the, they're printing, they need a different printer.
It, it, I guess it depends on the, on, you know, the weight of paper and what they want and so forth, I, uh, uh, we, uh, this last round of brochures that we printed, I think were, uh, were a little more expensive. We went, we're printing fewer higher end ones and targeting where we give them out and focusing uh, at the railway museum anyways, focusing more and more on the web and, uh, as a way of getting the word out, uh, but uh, I think, um, I don't know, without seeing their, their quote, it's hard to know, like, what's the weight of the paper? Is it in color? Is it in black and white? Uh, is it just a tri-fold? Uh, that's what it sounds like from the description.
I don't know, I just wonder if, if we're, if you guys are talking about it more because it's one.
It is.
We didn't swipe the night other people's, uh.
We did a little bit. We did a little bit. I just, the only, again, and you guys had your own thing, but I just, I I just have a hard time with elk, that's the only thing, that's the only thing.
So, just to get some clarity here in the room, so let's just, let's just say, we'll just start with you do the twelve hundred. Okay, we'll talk about the right amount. Even with funding the twelve hundred, did you want the conversation from me to be please in the flyer, do make a sentence or a disclaimer about the animals being, and then um, I, I don't think that's a horrible thing to ask for.
No, that's the only thing I want.
It's also, I also feel like they want the money, so.
Yeah, and let's, and then now let's figure out the money. Yeah, I just don't, I just, oh God. I'm gonna, I'm gonna send you all these things that people are talking about.
Okay, with the, I guess the other issue though, um. There's no North Bend funding for this.
No. It's a problem.
And we know that because they said other funding sources there, yeah.
Well, do you, you want to do, do something like two thousand dollars to them and advise, you know, Meadowbrook Farm needs to be a partnership between North Bend, Snoqualmie and the farm itself.
Or you do, you take thirty-two hundred and you do fifty percent of that, and you, and we were really getting into the weeds, but you, that, that was the message you sent. If you want the other fifty percent, ask North Bend.
I'm giving them a little leeway because I don't, I don't want to punish them too much.
It's not their fault.
It's not their fault that North Bend is.
But they do have seventy thousand dollars in their LTAC funds.
All the motels.
Yeah. Did you know that, Richard?
No.
Yeah.
No, a lot of, a lot of, uh, things that were difficult to understand, the decisions that were made the last few years in particular, but that aside, doesn't the City of North Bend and Snoqualmie together provide uh, an equal base amount of, uh, operating support for Meadowbrook Farm? Isn't that part of that, uh, inter-local agreement?
We providing financial support, or is it? I'm sorry, I'm not.
Kind of in the past, yes, and it has been. Uh, I think right now with the governance still in flux and everything else, I couldn't say at the moment. Uh, but it, it is a joint, like I said, it's a joint partnership, Snoqualmie, North Bend and the farm.
Or the Sioux, because aren't they the third person, Sioux Park District? They're doing the maintenance and their operations of it.
Well, they were brought in mainly to book the, uh, rentals from what I understand, so they're managing rental of the facility.
I also.
They were going to do maintenance, too.
Yeah, now they're doing like the park operation element or maintenance of it.
It was, board members were getting out there on their, doing the mowing themselves and everything, and.
Oh, wow. Yeah, trying to get tractors at good prices and other things, if I recall, yeah.
Plus, it's also a lot of, you're probably seeing it. Getting that younger generation to come in and do these kind of things.
Not happening.
Not happening, and.
That's, that's a long conversation, yeah.
Richard's like, don't start.
Existing board members want something else to do.
Yeah. Well, and, and, and someone's son shouldn't be operating tractors. That was the other problem.
Yeah. Uh, so you want to, you want to fund them at the thirty-two hundred requested, you want to fund them at half of that emphasizing partnership, you want to fund them at two thousand emphasizing partnership, but, you know, giving them something to get things rolling while that conversation happens.
Well, Kelly, where are you on this?
Well, I don't know how much funding North Bend does of the, of Sioux, I mean, uh, of, of Meadowbrook. So if, if they're not funding, like you guys are funding Meadowbrook, then we do have.
It, it is fluctuating back and forth.
Okay.
Okay, there, there have been times where Snoqualmie guys up in here and said, no.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, we pushed a long time for trying to get the farms, we wanted them self-sufficient, probably an unreasonable expectation.
Hmm, I didn't add them on here. Sorry.
So remind me where the twelve hundred came out of, the, that we sho- shoehorned in before?
Thousand dollars out of Snoqualmie Winter Lights and a, uh, two hundred dollars out of Snoqualmie Days.
So I think we should, the Twin Peaks exhibit should have some come out of that, and then the International Block Party as well.
Kelly, do you think we're giving them an opportunity to succeed with two thousand dollars in funding?
I think we should go ahead and fund it, the three thousand, and I, so I'm going to take a thousand, I can take, I'm okay with taking, going back down to um, taking fifteen hundred from the, um, block party.
Okay, well, why don't we, um.
And then I would take some from the.
Why don't we share the, take, uh, uh, and take six hundred dollars out of the train museum marketing?
Okay, well, where are we at? Okay, so we're taking a thousand here, right? I'm going to go back down.
No, no.
Yeah, that was the twelve.
Okay.
And then revert your Snoqualmie days back to that. And then.
Oops, those are the same numbers.
Yours is the same numbers as the Snoqualmie.
I did, no, wasn't it seventy-two hundred there?
It was seventy-two hundred there.
Yeah, but why are the numbers?
No, and it, I didn't, numbers didn't change. But in the sum changed.
I, well, because, because I just, it should have changed, right?
Go down to, go to that cell. D two to D fourteen.
I know, I can't do this.
I'm like, okay, Excel and pressure. Well, I added, the cell did change when I did that.
That's weird.
Oh, what are you telling me? Y T two. That's Snoqualmie Days.
Is it some, I mean, it should already be there.
Well, some, D two.
Just do old school sum, like just sum the, just select all and sum it, I mean, I wonder if.
Do the D thirteen, yeah.
What do you need?
No.
Are you masked?
You're the F and H R, so I figured you know how to run a social machine better than I do. Yeah, and sum it.
Sum is seventy-five hundred, where did the, why didn't? Do we not have that right?
We already put the twelve hundred on that.
Oh, you already put the, that's right, we already put the twelve hundred there, so that's, it is right.
Oh, okay, because I put that in.
Put that in first.
Oh, okay, okay, oh, I was doing something right, okay. So we're back to where we were, because that was the fund, that's the amount we have, is one seventy. Okay, yes, so if we let, okay, that's one seventy-five, so now if you give them more money, then that's where you have to tinker with other people, and I was losing track of where, what you were saying.
So, Richard, you were saying, where was it?
So, and, and to be fair, I would probably do, uh, thirty-one hundred um, on their ask, so everybody else is giving money, so I feel like that maybe we should do the thirty-one hundred instead of thirty-two, thirty-three to make it easier.
Oh, just a simple buy-in.
Yes.
Oh, because it's just pennies, yeah.
Uh, and then, uh, so going back up, the block party, you were willing to take that to?
You can do a thousand, uh, fifteen, fifteen hundred, whatever you want to do on that, but also the, the train, the Twin Peaks exhibit.
Twin Peaks.
Then we're a hundred, so not, so let's do, um.
Fifty-five hundred? We need to shake nine hundred dollars.
Yeah, so let's do five hundred off of that.
Fifty-seven hundred and then take, take, uh, uh, six hundred from the, uh, Train Museum Marketing Budget, the second line. So that we're all, uh, sharing in the, uh, in the sacrifice.
Well, I didn't share any.
There you go. Yes, you did. You're good.
You shared a thousand dollars?
Yes, you did, so, yeah.
Okay, got you, okay.
And then, you know, whatever you can do for those trees or not, you may have to conversation with her that says, not have it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, are you okay with that? I'm good with that.
Yeah, it looks too good to me, Kelly, I think, uh.
Yeah.
It, it feels equitable.
Yeah, okay.
All right, thank you all, so now.
By the way, excellent job on the lights this year, I really like what they did this year.
Yeah, we, I, I will say, Richard, I spent a lot of time working with staff and Ryan Barnett. Um, he's my guy. I told him, I'm like, there's downtown Bellevue and Snowflake Lane, there's National Lampoon Christmas, and we're in the middle.
Not familiar with that one.
Cat, I didn't see the cat.
Yeah, but, I mean, we hope to do better next year, because we're going to work on the. Yeah, but I mean, we hope to do better next year because we're gonna work on the power situation and so of course, I, I actually met with him today and we walked the site and I. We were in agreement, like things that looked nice, um. So I am, am pleased, I just, I just wish I had more resources and um, the staff had more time, so I. I'm happy, so thank you, Richard, it was just hard with the power, um, some things weren't on this year, but we'll get better at that.
I know, the, the mayor would really like me to move a few things around down there along the trail as well. And uh, and clean that up, make that a little nicer, and if these uh, crossing projects come to pass, we have to put a power drop in. At Northern Street.
Oh.
Uh, and that will provide, I think, a better option, technically the power will be for signals. Uh, but uh, I think it's something that will make uh, doing that stuff down in that area a lot easier than what we're doing now, which is kind of a. Uh, bailing wire and, and duct tape type installation.
Well, thank you for letting us light the trains, I think they. They looked very sweet and um. I just think it's lovely, so, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, we do as well too, and uh, you're, and we're gonna put a, a power drop into um. Uh, uh, the, the Deep Square Park there too, it's gonna go in by the gazebo for the. Or for King Street.
That's always my problem, right there.
And so as long as it's just LEDs, I, I don't mind sharing.
Okay. Yeah, some of the trees weren't lit, especially in the rain, those first couple weeks of December, and I just. Yeah, I, I just can't deal with it, invite the world and then. Nothing's on, so. The day of the event, they were having troubles and I said, the tree in the gazebo, whatever else is bonus, I just, I, I, I said, just make that happen for me. And I, and they did, I mean, they were pulling cord, they were getting rugs from Parks and Public Works to cover cords, I, I mean, I. I said, I, I can't wish for it all tonight, just get the tree in the gazebo and we're good. So.
I, I thought it all worked out really well this year and uh, we'll just uh, continue to improve for uh. Uh, for the years coming, I, I think this is a, a great thing for us to do long term.
Yeah.
Collectively and um. So again, well done, uh, I guess we have to officially move to recommend uh. The attached uh, Excel spreadsheet for funding for LTAC. Uh, to forward on to city council, is that correct?
Sure, let's make the motion.
You make the motion on second.
So, so moved.
Okay, and then um, customer hallway, what, will we need to take it back to F and A or will you walk it on on Monday or what do you? I know we don't like to walk on, but. What kind of leeway do you think we have here? I don't think Dana has published the agenda.
Well, I, if it's a walk-on, I mean, it pops on.
I mean, we can follow proper channels, but then we're just, we're losing that, that many more weeks.
And, and we did that for the first time.
Mm-hmm.
And was sent back, I think.
No, the first time in December, we followed all the channels, went to F and A and then it went, this all occurred on the day that it went to city council, we were. Expecting the council to approve it. We walked it on in twenty-twenty-three because of the retreat and let's say resigning, that's when you walked that one on. This one we didn't walk on.
Let me, let me talk to Dana at six o'clock.
Okay. She's zooming in, but you can talk to her. Yeah, she's.
Sometimes that Zoom thing, um.
She lives in Arlington.
I spend my day in my office talking to a screen, so I didn't, the last one, I should really complain.
Okay, well, Richard, thanks, Richard and Kelly, thank you, we'll figure it out.
Vote, right?
What?
We're supposed to vote, aren't we?
Oh.
All those who favor say aye.
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 Any votes? It's unanimous.
Okay, there you go.
Thank you, Richard.
Thank you as well.
Good night.
Good year, everyone, good night.